Blowing the cable.
Who's blowing it? You, Richard?
This is Little Richard.
Okay, folks, so we're gonna try to get through this as relatively quickly as we can. The CAO report's there. If no one has any questions, or if you do, you can probably ask Jeff. You can ask Nat, but you can also give him a call or whatever. Is there any-
He doesn't do very much.
What's? He doesn't know. He doesn't do much in the running-
For a couple of days.
Right? Fire department? Is there anything you need to share, Chief?
Nothing I want to share, Richard, any questions?
Anything for the chief? Yeah, thank you. We're good? Planning, asset management, and infrastructure? Yeah, put your light on there. As my grandfather would say, "Chief."
As the chief made his presentation, I did get a little stuff here. Chief, so in New Denver, I think the cost of getting them on the staff-
Got it right the right first way.
...is saying, yeah, every thousand, $5,000, $2,000, $2,000. And kit is about $5,200?
Fifty-six.
I think I said fifty-six.
Fifty-six hundred?
Eighteen hundred and fifty-six hundred.
This is all ballpark, and this is-
Eighteen hundred and fifty-six.
Yeah.
And how many new do we have coming?
Well, that's just it. We've decided to do things different this year because of the amount of people we get in each course, and we went up fast, and that's causing a big issue with funding for getting them trained. So this year, we're gonna look at an OJT package, on-the-job training, and take it in slowly that way.
So your recruitment effort did bring in a-
It, 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 the first year was a positive, a positive big increase. That was a bit too much for us. Then the second year, it went down. Third year, it went down a bit more.
And what's the like, what's the approximate life cycle on that equipment that they are kitted out with?
It depends on what, there's a whole bunch of different equipment. The bunker gear, you can, you can probably look at, at about ten years at the very most, and that drops rapidly.
Some of them would be shorter and longer.
Oh, yes. It depends on the manufacturer. It depends, then you've got your helmet, you've got your gloves, your flash hood, your boots. It just goes on and on and on, and about two years ago, we also went to personal face masks and stuff like this because of the hygiene and of all the different stuff that was going around.
That's good. Thank you.
Good. Thanks, Chief. Anything else for our ch-? No, we're good to go. Thank you. Okay, so asset management, infrastructure renewal. We're good? Finance, we'll do. You don't have anything today, do you, Jerry?
No, I do wanna just give you a quick update. I've done my best guess at year-end. Auditors have been in already. Trying to figure out where we are for March 31st. Numbers change, and they're significant, but we're gonna be close to, right around our zero bottom line. I'm guesstimating right now that within $25,000 of zero, could be positive, could be negative. That'll change with auditors, but it looks like it'll be right there again, whether it's a small surplus or small deficit. I don't know yet.
Good stuff. Than a penny. We got a lot done. We really got a lot done this year. Okay, recreation, Frank's gone. Economic development, so Ms. Natalie.
Thank you. If there are any questions on my staff report, I'd be happy to answer it. If not, we can go into the RFD.
No, we're good? Yep, we're good.
So the next thing is the request for decision for the Smart City Challenge. The recommendation that came back from the public, if we'd like to do that now.
Okay.
So staff is recommending to council to approve the reinvent the Cooperative for Social Change and Economic Benefit that received 83 votes as the most voted issue idea identified by residents for the Smart City Challenge. So in layman's language, that's housing. So attached in the report, I did provide the voting results. I summarized those. There, there, I mean, it was quite a large gap between 83, and the number two was related to physical activity.
Make a motion, Your Worship, we accept the recommendation presented by the Economic Development Officer.
Looking for 83. Where's 83? Yeah. I have, I have one question. Housing. Are we talking about more affordable housing, or is this housing, housing? How did I miss? Up there. I was on the wrong page. Sorry.
So the, at this stage of the competition, it's really to identify a problem statement, right? So that could be accessible, it could be affordable, it could be market, it could be for seniors.
Yeah, I've got two. I get Jim first, and then, go ahead, Jim, and then Jeff.
This is just a little bit of a tease. I wish you could have allowed me to vote more than once, Natalie. My seawall didn't get very many votes, did it?
Yeah, we got a lot of, we got a lot of views, but I think, you know, it's a cultural thing. If you look at the campaign for the food truck, you're out there. If you look at any type of issues where they're a bit more complex, or they're a bit more controversial, typically, you know, you don't get a, you get a lot of opinions, but when people ask to vote it, 10 times not to be is- But we'll work on it. It's, it's, we're building it. We're building it.
I support the, the suggestion here, so I'm all set.
Good. Jeff?
Yeah, so, so the, this stage is about, is about identifying a problem, engaging the community, and, and proposing a problem that data and new technology could help to, help to address. And so the problem statement is, I think if you look in the third page of the request for decision, the bottom item, which shows the 83 votes, says, "Unemployment, mental illness, and ability to access secure and stable housing are all issues that have been identified within the town of Yarmouth. As a service center for Southwest Nova, and being more dense and built up in comparison to outlying areas, the town has found the vulnerable individuals are drawn to the town for rental housing, minimum wage job opportunities, and access to public transportation." So that's a challenge we're faced with as a town, as a regional center. And so the, I guess the, the thinking is, is that a lot of people support that as a, as a problem statement that we'd like to address. We submit it through this process. If we get to the next stage, they give us money to, to investigate what a solution might look like. And then we submit that, and if we are selected, that's when the millions of dollars arrive to implement the solution. So this is step one, and it is a problem. We hear lots, those are problems, I guess, that you would say we hear lots about in our community, and so there shouldn't be any surprise about that. And if we were successful to get to the next step or beyond, then it's a great opportunity for our community.
Good, Phil?
Yeah, just in regards to what Council replied, said, "I think, Jim, you'll see a lot more pickup and initiative and comments, and trying to get something going when the municipality gets their project with the, with the walkway through Lake Milo coming down to the newly renovated Milo Boathouse down Hittingwater Street. You'll see a lot of people wanting to connect the dots." So you're, like, you're always, Jimmy, you're always a few years before your time.
Or ahead of my time.
Or you're ahead of your time. Let's say something.
Okay, so I'll call for the question.
Questions, Chief?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried.
I would appreciate, just to add to that, if, if you could call a council meeting after this session. We have a very short timeline to submit the application, which we're gonna do it electronically, April 22nd, 23rd.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We can do that? We can do that? Okay, operational services, business, tender, accessible transit bus. Do you want this?
Thank you. So, Your Worship, we have a memo in your, in your package from Dave Ernst, our town engineer. He advises that tenders were advertised on the provincial procurement site for the supply of a cutaway-style, low-floor, accessible transit bus. Tender closed on March 14th and was opened in council chambers. Two submissions were received, and they are summarized in his memo. He goes on to say that they are recommending the, the low bid, Crestline Coach Limited. And after reviewing the floor plan for seating positions with the supplier, one additional wheelchair position can be accommodated, and one additional two-person seat. It's much more cost-effective to include one additional wheelchair position at the time of manufacture. So the cost of that item would be $1,290, plus the cost of additional seat is $1,095. The total seating capacity with both items added is 16 seats, plus, plus one wheelchair position, or 14 seats, plus two wheelchair positions. The total, so it's flexibility there in how you either use the wheelchair position or lower a seat. Total cost, including the optional wheelchair position and additional two-person seat, is $130,991, plus HST. So it's recommended that the, the optional items, as discussed, have be included, and the tender be awarded. And just as a point, the other tenderer was not in compliance with several requirements within the specifications, including the non-kneeling suspension and a Ford chassis. So the kneeling suspension is that, that issue we've had so much a problem with, with the current bus. It's a, it's an air ride system, and the computer on that, and then the bag itself just hasn't been, hasn't been a good thing. And switching to requiring a Ford chassis, the GM chassis we have right now, in fact, we get our service from a local Ford dealership because they have the, the ability to, to handle trucks, and we also, there's another service outlet in Wedgeport that assists us. So we're, we're specifying a Ford chassis because there's a Ford dealer that can handle trucks in our area. So that is the recommendation. I would ask you to consider that. Be happy to answer any questions I might be able to answer, and as with the previous item, if we could approve this at a council meeting, if it's your wish, approve this at a council meeting later this afternoon. That would allow us to proceed with, with the order.
Crestline, who we got the first one from? Yeah, address that, 'cause this just really-
Yeah, so, so Crestline, what they do is they, they buy, they buy a chassis. So this cutaway, this cutaway-style, low-floor, accessible transit bus, what they do is much like TriStar does, is they buy a cutaway vehicle, the chassis, the drive chain, drivetrain, and the cab is, comes directly from the, from Ford or GM. And what they build is that, is the-
Shell.
Where, where the passengers sit, right? That's, that's what they do, and they put it all together into a nice package. We haven't had issues so much with what they do as much as the, the actual, the air ride system with the original chassis. And we've had, we've had other issues, but they all go back to the original manufacturer chassis. So we don't have any issue in recommending another Crestline build.
Okay, good. Jim?
I guess, Jeff, just a question. So the current bus we purchased, which is not in service right now, will that ever be good for anything? Will that ever be good for anything?
Yes, I say that optimistically. My understanding is that the current issue is in the computer module that regulates the air pressure in the air ride system. That's as much as I can tell you. I really don't know any deeper than that.
Sure, no.
I don't know what the communication has been with the manufacturer of that system, and whether it's simply a, a software issue, or if there's a hardware issue, I don't know, but-
Whose cost is it to get it up and running?
The, the cost of the repairs has been largely warranty. What our cost has been, has been the replacement vehicle. So you remember a few weeks ago, we purchased a, a bus, a small van, so that we could mitigate against those costs. So at, at the present, it's a, it's a service inconvenience that we don't have an accessible bus, and it's an annoyance, the amount of money we've paid for that vehicle and not to have it in service. But it isn't so much a, an out-of-pocket money cost at this point.
How long would that warranty last on the, on the current bus that we have?
I, I don't know the detail of that.
And that's okay, yeah. I'm just, the, the actual vehicle we're using, can, can we get a design for it to make it look like a transit bus? Or is it, we're just going to live with it the way it is until a new one arrives?
So, that's a goo, that's a good question. It, it looks like just about any other van on the road, except for that little transit sign. You know, we could look at, at possibly dressing it up a bit. It isn't, you know, it's our hope that that isn't part of our long-term solution for transit, but I get your point. It looks like any other church bus on the road.
Yeah, I know. So that, when the new vehicle arrives, we'll have, could have two vehicles.
We could have two ex- Right, one in the backup, right. Two accessible, wheelchair-accessible transit buses, one on the road, one in backup, so we can do our prop, do our service conveniently, properly. And when something goes wrong, we have a wheelchair-accessible transit bus to replace it.
Might even be able to go to Arcadia or up to Dayton.
Not if the UARB has its way.
Sorry, no, I have a response, but I don't wanna give it to you right now.
I probably have his response, too. Okay, so.
Question, Your Worship.
So did, did somebody make a motion?
We'll make a motion, we accept the recommendation of staff.
Okay, moved and seconded. Discussion?
Question, Your Worship.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Correspondence for action. 2018 UNSM priorities on council agendas. So, go ahead.
So, Your Worship, sorry, you're on, you're on the board. You may wanna speak to this.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, so UNSM has 10 items that they have identified as, as I would say, potential priorities, and it appears that what they're doing is they're reaching out to the member municipalities, member councils, and asking you to look at those 10 items and provide them with feedback in terms of priority. And, and I assume they're going to aggregate whatever feedback they get, and that will ultimately inform their decision in terms of how these shake out as priorities, and it does indicate they'll be on the, the spring, the spring agenda.
Yeah, so I thought they were looking for a top three.
I didn't see top three in there.
No, we had some of that discussion at the table. So we're just looking for, so we'll add this to the council agenda and discuss where they are in terms of where we, what ones we believe are, are important.
A couple of them, things that you've spoken about in a public forum that you've got quite a bit of grief, grief over, are actually being presented by, or the feedback's been given to Union Nova Scotia Municipalities when it comes to some of the cannabis stuff, and the cost of policing, and the cost of-
Go on. You mean, I didn't, I didn't make that up?
No, I just, I just wondered, just looking at some of the things that, that you've been getting pounded about, and some of the things that the president of Union Nova Scotia Municipality said that's gonna cost municipalities more, it's upside down, but-
I guess you consider who's doing the pounding, first of all.
Okay.
So, so I gotta say this. Now that you mentioned cannabis, I have to say this is a sidebar. The province came out with their rules, I guess. What would you call it?
Smoke and rules.
Bylaws.
Bylaws, or whatever, yeah. And so it, it appears it will be the same as cigarettes. So you can't walk down the street with a beer, but you can walk down the street and smoke a joint. Yeah. Yeah. Anyway, that might not go very far. That's right. Intoxication, right? The whole intoxication piece, but you can walk down Main Street and smoke a joint. That oughta be good. Okay, so a motion just to add this to the agenda and make sure that we look at these, what we think is important. Thank you, Don, Sandy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Okay, additions. I guess I better go fast. Couple, couple times, the, I've, I've just had some requests for a porta potty at Beacon Park. I didn't know where to bring it. Jeff, maybe you can speak to it. I don't know. But, but I know that the church is there. There's a lot of kids that use the park year-round, and the church isn't always available. There's nothing there. I gotta tell you, I, I told them, I told them basically why we keep ours locked down here, because people have a bad habit of doing what they do and washing it all over the walls, because that's what people do around here. So I don't know. Sorry, go ahead.
So, so, Your Worship, I think I, I sent you a, a quick email on that, and so what I, what I would recommend we do, and, you know, Beacon, Beacon Park is one, one public area, one park where there is no washroom solution, but there are, there are many others, and, you know, we've talked about washrooms downtown. We've talked about washrooms on the waterfront. We've talked about washrooms in parks. Some, some facilities, like Broadbrook Park, there are washrooms. There is a portable toilet put at, at Milton Ball Field each, each summer. Maybe we should have a policy so that, you know, we can, why don't you ask for a staff report so that we can look at the cost, the number of places, maybe make a recommendation to you?
Point.
And, and so we're not just dealing with these in one-off because-
Yeah.
Nobody mentioned Dun Irving Park doesn't mean that there isn't a need there.
I didn't even know we did any of the, so we do some. I'd like to know how many we do, and how our experience has been, and what's been costing us.
Yeah, good point. So you wanna make that motion to-
I'll make that, yes, I'll make that, Your Worship. I'll make it a motion that we request staff to look into the issue of a policy, in practice, a draft policy for the use of porta potties. We already have some. I don't know how many. I'd like to know how mu, how many, roughly what it's costing us, and what kind of experiences we've had with them before we expand.
Okay, moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions being called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Okay, 9B. Don't ask, I guess I wasn't sleeping one night. I added all these, we have, it's probably not even our issue, but it is. We have no hostel, no shelter. We have nothing for men, nothing. And, and somebody said to me, I, I'm just gonna say it because it struck me. It, it was an older couple, not older, but 30s, and he said, "If I were 24, I could go to shift, and if I were beating my wife, she could go to Juniper House. We would be fine. We'd have a place to stay." And it broke, it just, it just hit me so hard, I couldn't. So there's two sides to it. I wanna open up a shelter so that everybody comes to Yarmouth because there is a shelter. You don't wanna do that. But I, I don't know where it should land. Like, I, I don't know where it should land, or, or where to start the conversation, or, you know, what to do. We certainly can't take everything on ourselves, but gotta be, gotta be something for- You know, I mean, Juniper House is there, right? But nothing for the men. Go ahead, Jeff.
So, question, is this, is this something that's a community services issue? Right, who should be leading, I guess, is the question?
And that's what I'm asking, that's what I'm asking, too.
And if, if you lead as a, as a single municipality, then you, you'll bear the cost on your own, and we don't have any expertise in this area.
Yeah.
Right? The province has a department that has some responsibility and some expertise.
Okay.
So maybe, maybe start by having that conversation. Find out what, what is their current policy and practice? What is happening, what do they know? What can they tell us about what's happening in other areas?
And I have no problem doing that. I can do that.
And we can, you know, bring that back and, and maybe identify what, what is the municipal role in areas where they do have such shelters.
Perfect. Phil?
Well, I think that's, Councilhood touched on, was gonna touch on a little bit. I think that's one of those areas that you get involved, that we give money to community services and housing. And like the CAO said, there, there's been so much downloading that the municipal unit, we've had some of the conversation with the other municipal units the last couple discussions that if it happens in the town of Yarmouth, we're gonna bear, bear full, brought in full responsibility for running the facility, where we don't have any expertise, and then the problems fall back on us when the government and the Department of Community Services and Housing has the wherewithal to take care of this issue, and there could be, there could be housing solutions out there that we don't know about.
Yeah, perfect. So I can, I'll, I'll, I don't mind starting that conversation. I had, I had a young man that was homeless, and he was upset, and he was homeless because they, he wasn't allowed to stay with his girlfriend. I said, "What's more important, a roof over your head, or, you know, like, so you gotta, you gotta consider?" So I'll, okay, I'll do that then, if everybody's all right with it. That's easy. Okay, 9C. Sorry, here we go again. Litter and dogs on Main Street. I, I don't know, but, sorry. Help. So we gotta, we have to do something. The question is, number one, number one, there's too much number two. Right? It's just, it's just, it, it's everywhere, and it's on Main Street, and somebody has to be seeing these people do this. People would say, oh, so I've had all kinds of suggestions, but I just don't know where to go with it. So the question is, how do we get people to put litter in the garbage cans and to clean up their dog crap? And please don't, before you, I put your light on, don't have, I know you're not gonna tell me this. Don't tell me educate the public, because anybody that doesn't get, don't let your dog crap without you picking it up, and stop throwing your coffee cups and garbage on the sidewalk when there's a friggin' garbage can 10 foot to feet away. I'm sorry. You can't, you can't educate those people. Okay, so go ahead.
So-
I'm really upset.
So a number of years ago, we had a local business donate, I believe donate, Sandy and Clifford know more about this.
Cameras.
No, many garbage cans to be, to be receptacles, sorry, to be put along Main Street, and we, they hired somebody, and now we hire somebody to, to empty those on a, on a regular basis. One of the things we did in the, you know, in the interest of what Gus Green promotes, which is waste separation, is we actually ganged like four of those together on each side of the street down towards the Brown Street parking lot. And what that did is, because we didn't increase the supply, it actually decreased the frequency at which you pass one of those on the street. And I'm starting to wonder, because one of the things I'm hearing from people who complain about this issue is there's no garbage cans on Main Street. Well, if you look down Main Street, there are quite a few, but they aren't as frequent as they used to be. And I'm kinda wondering if we shouldn't un-gang those, those garbage receptacles, put them back so that they're more frequently along your walk on the Main Street. You know, we do have the, the bags for people with dogs to, to pick up their waste. We do have a fella, the fella who empties the garbage cans does also is part of his duty. He does deal with the number two on his list.
Oh, we do everything but walk their dog, frankly.
But, but it shouldn't be that everybody, our citizens, just go when they throw their garbage, and they let their dog do their thing, and, you know, we'll pay a staff person with their tax dollars to clean it up later, but maybe, excuse me, maybe un-ganging those receptacles might help a little bit. It isn't gonna be the full solution.
Oh, sorry, Sandy, didn't see it.
That's the main thing about, everybody complains about is that we don't have enough garbage receptacles. And also, talking about that, there's actually dog crap right out here in front of Town Hall, up on the ledge. However, it did it up on the ledge. I have no idea, but when I came in, it was there.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not, I, I know it seems like a little issue, but it's not a little issue. So, we gotta get out of here. I know, we're gonna be out of here by six. Yeah, that's exactly it. Like, what are we gonna do? We gotta do something.
So the only thing I've suggested is the un-ganging, and that's, that's easy enough. We'll, we'll task Public Works to do that, as long as you're okay with doing that, because, like I say, it was done with all good intent that we would- like I say, it was done with all good intent, that we would support the separation, but we do have source separation containers of a different style on Main Street. I think these cans, if they can help us at all by being more frequent on people's walk, then we'll prob, we might have a little less litter.
No way.
Some way we can change those to people's light posts.
Or mounted. Bolted to the sidewalk, yeah.
Go ahead, Sandy.
No, that's what I was going to tell them, that they are bolted to the sidewalk.
All right. Okay, so do we need a motion to do something? What do we need? Okay. Moved, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Last one, I'm just going to throw it out there, I think everybody knows Sandra Finney has done, has written a book, it's called In My Backyard or whatever, and it's about the coolest things in Yarmouth Town and Yarmouth, she goes, I think she goes into Shelburne as well, but in this area, including the...
She did a trip a day for 30 days.
Yeah. Yeah, she has, and, and it's got some of the coolest things that you would ever find, including in the town. Like, behind the library, they took all the headstones and put them together as a wall and stuff like that. So, it is an easy read. How much are the books, do you know? $20. $20. So, I, I'm just throwing it out there. Really?
I'll make a motion.
I'd love to buy like...
I'll make a motion.
10 books. And give them to the town so we can give away... Okay, we're done. You sure? Okay, I'm having lunch with her tomorrow, I'll tell her to find you. You sure? Okay, all right, done. All right, so, motion to adjourn. Okay, so I'm going to call the council meeting to order. Record of attendance, declaration of conflict of interest, and we have two things on the agenda, which, and we have in camera as well, but council regarding the Smart City, we're looking for a motion to...
We accept staff recommendations.
Okay, seconded by Don. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried, and we're looking for approval on the transit.
We accept staff recommendations.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion?
Questions.
Questions being called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Motion to go in camera? Motion to go in camera? Okay, let's go.